One, two, three, four. Four. Let's see, everybody.
Everybody's here, except for Ray.
Three. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting order then, if that's okay. I'm gonna call the meeting order for the Cumberland School Committee, Thursday, November 19th, at seven o'clock PM. According to Governor Armando's executive order, date 20-93 dated November 5th, 2020, the Cumberland School Committee intends to conduct this meeting remotely. The public can participate in this meeting remotely, but not in person, by calling area code 301-715-8592, and the webinar ID is 991-808-40003. Or if you'd like to join us on the Zoom program, please go to the Cumberland School Department website. Under the Events Calendar, you'll find the link for the Zoom meeting, and the password is 880341. Thank you. All right, the first order of business is a pledge of allegiance. You can remain seated. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next is approval of our agenda. Item number A is compliance with the governor's executive order, 20-93 dated November 5th, 2020. Is there adequate? We're gonna have discussion in the vote whether there is public access to the meeting through adequate alternate means. And I see many members of the public here in the meeting, so I would say that we are in compliance, and I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Mrs. Waters.
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
I have it six to zero. Please note for the record that Mr. Salvatore is not present at this time. Next is the consent agenda. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting of October 22nd, 2020. The item number two is the organizational meeting, special meeting on November 12th, 2020, which did not happen. The election has not been certified. We have approval of the minutes from October 22nd, 2020. We have the enrollment report from November 1st, 2020. The school police report from October 1st, 2020. We have numerous school bus inspection reports from November 1st, 2020. We have residency and truancy reports from November 1st, 2020. And we have personal actions tonight that were in the folder. I will just read off the, these are the superintendent's personal actions. We have a retirement after 17 years effective February 26, 2021, of Pearl Lemoine. She's a paraprofessional. And we have an appointment effective November 9th, 2020, of Robert Hood. He is a professional at McCourt. It's a one-year position, and it's a 15% co-pay. Is there anyone that wants to take any of these items out for the consent agenda for discussion? Here are none. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Mrs. Waters to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have it six to zero. Tonight, we also have report out of executive session meeting on November 19th, 2020. There were no votes taken tonight during executive session. I need a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
Motion to seal the minutes.
Motion by Mrs. Waters.
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
I have it six to zero. Next is the superintendent's report. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the school committee and the community present this evening. It's my pleasure to start the superintendent's report with a recognition. First of all, it's unfortunately that we, you know, have to conduct these meetings via Zoom as opposed to in person. But this is, I think, a really impressive accomplishment that we need to recognize. Nonetheless, it's my pleasure to let you all know that Sherri Hurd, a physical education teacher at Garvin Elementary School, was recognized as the Rhode Island Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance Person of the Year Award. So congratulations to Sherri. There she is, sporting those handsome sunglasses, if you can see her on the screen. Sherri, are you there?
I am, thank you.
Who is she?
Well, congratulations, Sherri. That's quite an accomplishment. And if I could, just share a few personal observations about Sherri. First of all, for those of you who are not aware, there are, all educators must be certified in very specific content areas. We know that you have to be certified to teach English, and you have to be certified to teach social studies and science and biology and chemistry. And in physical education, there is a special certification. It is a special certification that requires more coursework and adaptive physical education. So in order to work with students with disabilities, a physical education teacher must have this certification. And I can tell you, I have had an opportunity. Sherri and her colleagues have invited me to their schools to see some of the wonderful things that happen there. And here's one of the most impressive things that I recall seeing at Garvin that was, you know, coordinated by Sherri and her colleague. And it was this really impressive production that students were put in groups, and they had to choreograph, if you will, these mini presentations that involved movement, because it's physical education. So they were actually these, like, mini-choreographed productions. And here's the most, I thought, the most exciting thing of all. There were groups of two and three and four and five students working together. And also included in these groups were students with special needs and students who, I recall seeing one student who literally had a walker, and his classmates made sure that that child was included in the presentation. So, and they were all happy. They all loved it. They all loved performing it. And probably the most satisfying thing of all for me was seeing that that child, who had some sort of a physical disability, was included and treated just like everybody else. So to me, I mean, that the PE doesn't get any better than that. And Sherri was in the middle of that, and I have to believe that that is one of the many reasons why she has earned this distinction. So Sherri, congratulations to you. Congratulations to you too, Mrs. Carter, because she works with you. So congratulations, Sherri.
Thank you.
Now, I don't know if this, yeah, go ahead.
Anything you'd like to say? Go ahead.
I would just want to say thank you. It's an honor, so.
Well, and you know what? Good for you. Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. I think we'll be, does she get a bag, Mr. Mitchell?
You know what? We need to order some new bags. So, you know, as soon as we get the new, I think that's, I know, a highlight. That's something that everybody looks forward to. And yes, we need to get some more bags.
Okay, thank you. All right.
All right, so moving on then, you know, one of the things, yes, sir?
I just would like to say one thing about Sherri. Just because I've had the opportunity and pleasure to get to know her over the years from her time at BF and also her time at Garvin. She is well-deserving of this award. She has always approached her job with a passion and enthusiasm that is, I think, admirable. And she's just one of the great teachers that makes Garvin a great school and Cumberland a great district. So congratulations, Sherri, and thank you for all of your hard work.
Okay, moving on then, you know, one of the things that I wanted to share with all of you this evening. In fact, Mr. Fiorello said, you know, it'd probably be a good idea if we provided the school committee and the community with, you know, an idea as to how this whole pandemic and this COVID-19 has affected our students and staff. So we are generating totals in a number of categories. So we asked everyone to, you know, provide us with the information that we could share with you this evening as to the total number of students that have tested positive, the total number of adults that have tested positive, and the number of students and staff that have had to be quarantined as a result of all of these positive cases. Mike, can you please pull that document up so that we can present it this evening? Thank you. Thanks, Mike. And let me, you know, let me also say that to suggest that this is a fluid document would be an understatement. You know, we started compiling all of these totals over the last couple of days, and I can tell you that we have had to add to them. Yesterday, we had to add to it again today because our numbers are increasing. So as you can see, there are a total, and every one of our schools has been impacted. I, with the exception of Garvin, as far as students are concerned, 24 total students have tested positive. 10 staff members have tested positive. And as a result of those positive cases, 273 students have had to be quarantined. 47 adults have had to be quarantined. You all know that we've actually had to close school on a few occasions as a result. And because, as we have discussed on a few occasions, because the elementary and middle schools are set up in pods, we're able to, rather than make a decision about the entire school, we can make a decision about specific pods. And a total of seven have been impacted to date. So as I mentioned, this is a fluid number. And I must say that when we find out about a positive case, as you all know, members of the committee, a lot of action takes place. A lot of information has to be shared with the Department of Health. And as we have mentioned on several occasions, given the sheer volume of positive cases that we've had in the state, and that number is increasing, so for every, you know, I think it was 12, I don't know if it was 1,200 today or 1,200 positive cases yesterday, which is, I think, the highest amount of number of positive cases since the spring. Imagine doing the contact tracing for 1,200 people. That's a lot of work. And as you can imagine, the Department of Health is overwhelmed. There is some work being done to streamline that process, to create more regional groups of school districts with very specific Department of Health staff assigned to regions. And the hope is that the process will be more efficient and we'll be able to respond more quickly when we have these cases. I can tell you, it's not just Cumberland, but there's been a lot of frustration because we know that a case is positive. And a good example is when we found out that a member of a player on the soccer team tested positive. We did not hear from the Department of Health. That was on Friday, the 6th. And we didn't hear anything from the Department of Health until Saturday, the 14th. And the only reason for that was because, you know, our team was anxious to hear as to whether or not they would be able to participate in the playoffs. So, you know, I'm not blaming the Department of Health because I believe it's a capacity issue. They've hired more staff, more contact tracers. And, you know, it is what it is. And unfortunately, in this particular instance, students were hurt. So I just wanted to give you an update on that information. And I think to piggyback on this, I think everyone has heard that the governor announced today some new guidelines. Given the skyrocketing number of positive cases, it does affect schools and specifically the high school. And the directive is that there would be a reduced number of high school students attending on a daily basis. And let me just say, you know, we've already started to have the conversation as an administrative team. We know that people are anxious to hear what our next steps will be as a district. But one of the things I think that we need to consider, and I've already made contact with the Department of Education. I had a conversation with the deputy commissioner today. And given the way that we are currently organized with this hybrid model, where half the students come in on A-Day, the other half come in on B-Day, coupled with the number of students that are doing distance learning, we are in a position, if we choose to, and again, we'll have more conversations about this, to maintain the status quo that is currently in place. So I checked with the Department of Health, I mean, with the Department of Ed, to make sure that we could do that. And I, I mean, and I'm just one person right now. And again, we just learned about this this afternoon, like all of you. And, you know, I've been in nonstop meetings all day. But I believe that the least disruptive that we can be, and at the same time, ensure that we are taking all of the necessary steps to keep students and staff safe. If we can, if we can do that, then I think that personally, and again, that we're gonna be talking about this, then I think that is something that we should consider. So if I may, just move on to the next few items, and I'm sure folks might have some, you want to ask questions about that? First, of course, Mrs. Friedman.
The numbers that you shared, Bob, is that just for students that are attending class in person? 24, we have 24 positive cases, that's just for students attending school?
Very good question. We know that there are, there are students who are doing distance learning that have tested positive. But these numbers only include those students who are in person. And we have had some students doing distance learning that have tested positive, yes.
And do you know if there's been any spread of a positive student in the classroom, spreading it to another student in the classroom? I mean, it appears, maybe not. I mean, that's what the governor is saying, and, you know, people are saying that the spread is not happening in school because it's a controlled environment. But do you have, I mean, I would imagine if it was spreading, our numbers would be higher if it was spreading.
Great, great question. And I'm sure one that, you know, parents are anxious about, not just parents, but also staff. There is, one of the things that we've learned is that there is little evidence to suggest that there is, that school is a place where the spread of the virus is taking place. In fact, I stated, I shared this in my weekly communication, that we are, the superintendents met with Dr. Ja. That, you know, I think everyone has seen Dr. Ja on the national networks. And, you know, he stated publicly that, that there's evidence to suggest that schools are one of the safest places that students can be. And there's no question that the transmission is taking place outside of school. But there is no evidence, I shouldn't say no. There is little or no evidence to suggest that it's happening in school. And, you know, just, just, I mean, this clearly isn't, I mean, scientific study on my part. But I must say that it's, it's nice to see how conscientious students and staff are about wearing their masks. Everyone is, is, I think, really trying to do their part here and really conscientious about wearing their masks and washing their hands and using disinfectant and that sort of thing. So we'll, you know, we'll keep an eye on it. And, you know, we've been able to manage it so far. But there's no question that it does take a significant amount of time. No question about that. Any other questions about that? Mr. Collins? I knew he was gonna ask a question.
Makes you think that. I just have a quick question. I had a parent ask me about mask breaks at the middle school and something about they were being eliminated. Is there any truth to that? And if so, why?
Well, great question. Yeah, one of, one of the, one of the things that we've learned recently, and I think this is part of the guidance that has come out from the Department of Health. You know, there's that, I forget what the document is called, but there's that document that we refer to that is fluid, that does, that is updated on a regular playbook, on a regular basis. And one of the things that we learned the last week is that students are discouraged from having mask breaks. So we, we shared that information. And so let me give an example of the sort of thing that's happening that I think we should respect. And I'll use McCourt Middle School as an example. McCourt Middle School has scheduled two mask breaks a day. Now, I think it's also important to acknowledge that people are really hypersensitive about and aware that they have a responsibility to wear masks. So there's no question that this has been pounded into students' heads. So students and staff look forward to these breaks. And the way that McCourt does it is they actually have scheduled two times during the day where students and staff, if they so choose, are allowed to remove their masks. And when they do it, they do it outside, and they are at least six feet apart. So they are respecting the guidance. Now, I personally, I think this is well-thought-out. I'm just using McCourt as an example. I don't, I, to be honest, I'm, I think everyone else, all of the other principals are doing what they are supposed to be doing. But I think these kinds of creative approaches are what's happening in a lot of places. And that, to me, is something that I support.
Okay, anyone else? Any regards to that? Okay, Mr. Mitchell?
Okay, just very, very quickly, a couple of other things, Mr. Chairman. As you all know, there is work being done in front of the high school. I get a chance to get down there every now and then, just to check on the progress. Got down there today, and there were a group of construction workers continuing the work there. And anyone that's had a chance to even take a peek at the work that's happening there, there is lots and lots of cement work being done. It really looks, it really looks nice. And there is, you know, a schedule, as you all know. I know that it has been shared with the school committee, a schedule to actually complete the work. I know that there is, the gate, that will be electronic. And again, the important thing for everyone to know is that the reason that this work is being done is because of safety. And the goal is to prevent anyone who should not be accessing the main foyer of the high school from doing so. So all guests will have to go through a new entrance, and that work is moving along rapidly. The gates had to be fabricated, had to be ordered, and they had to be made. And I think, I don't remember specifically when they're supposed to be coming in, but I know that that work, that, that like is the next stage. There's some work that will begin inside of the high school, along the corridor that is, runs parallel to the auditorium. And then there'll be some landscaping work that will take place in the spring. Alex, did I capture everything pretty much?
I think the gates are doing really very soon, very soon. Maybe the end of this month, next month.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, that's an update on the safety project. And the only other thing that I wanted to mention is that the next townwide vaccination clinic is scheduled for December 3rd from 5:00 to 8:00 PM in the high school cafeteria. And you can register online at schoolflu.com. So I had my shot. I hope you all had yours. Good for you.
Thank you, Georgie.
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Next, we have payment of bills tonight. We have payment of the bills with heard in fiscal tonight. We have for the 2021 school year, payment of bills of the amount of $1,431,033.73. It passed on a two-to-zero vote. Mr. Fiorello, I'll get to you on the B comment about your question to Mr. Prignano. So it did pass in the two-zero vote, and I would move passage. Do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Mr. Fiorello, and who else second? Mrs. Benato, go ahead, Mr. Fiorello.
Do you want to answer the question that I had? I got a response from Mr. Prignano, and I think I'm satisfied, so.
Yeah, it was about the Durham, and yeah, I asked that same question. So that was, that was answered for you.
Yeah, maybe just for the public, we should just, now that they're probably wondering what we're talking about, maybe you can give a brief update, since you were in the meeting.
Well, we had, Durham has not been paid since the middle of March of this year. And they have, our contract calls for them to get paid monthly. And we still haven't resolved the issue. Well, we were closed for last year, but this is payments for this current year when they started transporting children this year. So that was the payment that we made to Durham in the fiscal. Okay? Anyone else? We have a motion in a second for the payment of the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have it six to zero. Thank you on that one. All right, next is fiscal subcommittee update. We did meet tonight. A couple of items were on there. We got a update from Sodesco Foods in regards to what's happening now. The school district is losing about $12,000 a month, considering what's been happening in the district. And so that was giving us an update in regards to what's happening. So Shawna Spillane from Sodesco is trying different items with schools to make the meal level count go up because it's being reimbursed by the federal government at this time. And we'll see where that goes in regards to Sodesco's report. We got an update from Mr. Prignano. We got an update from Mr. Pignano on the uh, monthly office report for budget. Currently, we're projected in the amount of about a hundred thirty-two thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars in the red for um, the um, revenues. And on the back, we have um, a projected right now of um, eight hundred fifty-two thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars in the positive, all said and done, but we have um, request from Durham to help pay their expenses while they were out um, during the COVID from March to September. And that will be discussed um, in regards to that. We have um, other expenditure projections of four hundred seventy-two thousand six hundred eleven dollars. So we could end up, depending what happens with Durham and so forth, if we choose to pay them of approximately three hundred thirty-nine thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars, but that is a fluid document that changes um, weekly in the school district between subs, teachers, and expenses that the district may have. And then um, we had two resolutions tonight, one's for Alphabet and the others for a payment for Colliers International. And those two items will be coming up uh, shortly. That is the fiscal management subcommittee report. For that, next is policy procedures subcommittee, Mr. Fiorello.
Yeah, I, I, we haven't met um, since uh, when we met, I think a month ago. I do not expect to meet until a new committee is sitting and a new policy subcommittee has been formed. I can say that there's some policy work happening uh, behind the scenes that hopefully when we do have that meeting, we'll have some policies for immediate review and hopefully a vote um, upon our first meeting.
Okay, thank you. Next is the achievement and communications subcommittee update, Mrs. Friedman.
Yep, a little bit of a similar story. We haven't met, um, but once we get the new committee in place, then we'll pick back up.
Great, thank you. And.
Uh, Mr. Chair, may I add something?
Go, go ahead.
Since I'm on the, um, one of the things, regardless of how the new subcommittee shakes out, uh, one thing I've been thinking about is um, I'd like to get a representative from maybe some colleges to discuss uh, COVID and how it's affecting the application process. Because I've talked to a lot of students who are worried about, is distance learning, is it going to impact my admission to whatever college I'm targeting? And uh, uh, I think it'd be good, because I think the colleges, it's fluid with them as well. So I think it would help a lot of parents and uh, prospective college students to figure out what the colleges are looking for now, because the game has changed in the last eight months.
It really has.
Yeah, and then, and that's a great um, a great idea, a great topic, and something, you know, the guidance it would be great if the guidance department at the high school was kind of proactively starting to provide some of that information too. You know, you, you could see some benefit from having kind of an open house about college, the college application process too, even beyond our subcommittee.
Right. Okay, thank you. Uh, next is District Health and Wellness Subcommittee Update.
Thank you. Um, yes, yeah, and we've been in the same boat, and we also have not met.
Okay, thank you. All right, next is the first of two comments from the public. If you'd like to speak to the school committee, please state your name and address for the record. Um, by legal counsel, we cannot comment back to you, but someone uh, could get you an answer after the meeting or tomorrow, the next day. And um, so if you want to be known, please let Mr. Chandler know that you can get in, uh, wave your hand, something, so he can uh, let us know. Mr. Chandler?
If you'd like to speak, you can raise your hand. If you're on the phone and you'd like to speak, um, you can hit star nine, and we can unmute you.
Great. Anyone uh, coming up?
I don't see anybody at this time with a hand raised.
No one at this time. Okay, so we'll move on. Next is, uh, we have discussion and a vote resolution, SCR twenty twenty oh eight Alphabet Education Contract Amendment. This was tabled from the last meeting. And for the public, what this is about is that our bond consul, council with the um, eighty-three million dollar bond has asked that we um, take a vote on this. And what it is, is um, they want to be able to issue the bonds tax exempt. And what we, we have a, a set amount that Alphabet, who provides um, after-school um, care for our children in the school district, um, we have a set rate that they pay us and with a guarantee. And because of the COVID nineteen issues that we're dealing with, um, they're not going to meet the guarantee, nor do I think it's uh, advisable that we try to force them to do that. So we have agreed that we're gonna amend the contract. They'll pay us on the per student and not the full year guarantee that we normally would get. And it's for one year only. Next year, come September of next year, the um, contract will go back and forth, and if COVID is still around by then, we'll have to deal with it again. But it did pass in the two to zero vote to amend the contract um, with Alphabet. So is there any question? I, I need a second. I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a second for Mrs. Waters. This did pass in fiscal on a two to zero vote. Do we have any uh, comments from the school committee members in regards to this? Okay, here and none, any motion to approve? Oh, actually, we did that?
We did.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it, it passed six to zero. Okay, uh, next is, we have some homeschool requests for the twenty twenty twenty-one school year. We have one renewal, and we have one to the five new requests. And generally, we just approved this, so I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Waters to approve?
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins, any discussion? Here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
I just have it six to zero on that one. Thank you very much. Next is, we have um, discussion and a vote to approve resolution, SCPR eleven twenty twenty eighteen. Uh, what is a um, payment for services for the contract manager, Colliers International. The amount is forty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. This is a part of the eighty-three million dollar bond. Colliers is our representative that watches out for the school district in the town to make sure everything is done correctly. And the payment comes from the eighty-three million dollar bond. So it passed in fiscal on a two to zero vote. I need a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters, any discussion in regards to this bill? Here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have it six to zero. Thank you very much on that one. All right, next is the second um, question of comments from the public. If you'd like to address the school committee, again, please state your name and address for the record. And um, we cannot answer you, but if it's important enough, we will get you an answer, you know, on the next business day or thereabouts. So please raise your hand, Mr. Chandler, again. Um, either they do it on their phone or Mr. Chandler, do we lose you? Yeah, there you go. Um, no, we're not hearing you. Can the members of the school committee hear me still?
Yes. I, I, Paul, I can see that uh, there are no member, no, no attendees with their hands raised.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Fiorello. All right, so next is uh, school committee comments, school liaison reports. Is there anyone here from the school committee you want to make a comment um, or school liaison report? I, Mr. Mrs. Friedman, go ahead.
Um, I actually have a question for Mr. Mitchell from earlier, if I may. Um, um, Mr. Mitchell, do you know when you may make a decision and then communicate to parents about the high school? You know, the governor said today, November thirtieth was, you know, for those two weeks, that's um, when high schools may change. But if we decide to stay as status quo or change, um, when do you think you'll be able to make that decision and then communicate out?
You know, I would never make any promises that we can't keep, but certainly, you know, we've already started talking about it. We'll talk about it tomorrow and then Monday and Tuesday of next week. So hopefully, we'll uh, come to some decision and inform families, students and families and staff. Um, by Tuesday, that'll be the goal.
Okay.
Okay, anyone have a uh, comment? Um, school committee comment liaison? Mr. Fiorello, go ahead.
I just want to point out that uh, we had a building committee meeting the other night. Uh, currently, we are looking at costs for increased um, purchases of air quality systems due to the COVID pandemic. It's gonna look very tough to be able to do some of that work, because it's, it's gonna be very costly once we figured out over this um, number of schools that we have to deal with. But it is something that we're investigating, and we're gonna have more information in our next building committee meeting. It has not been scheduled uh, yet, but it'll be.
Okay, thank you. I just had, go ahead, Mr. Collins.
I, I just want to recognize uh, the student athletes at Cumberland High School from the fall. Um, I know um, many of them competed, did very well across country. I've seen a lot of the runners did very well. Um, I want to recognize the, the boy soccer team who uh, got a tough pill to swallow based on um, just the situation we're in. Um, you know, they competed well this year, and unfortunately, the, the adults uh, were unable to, because of COVID, were unable to provide them with um, you know, a state tournament that they clearly earned. And the other one is, I want to recognize, uh, next, next, uh, a week from today is obviously Thanksgiving. I want to recognize the uh, the football team at the high school. Um, you know, Thanksgiving football is a tradition unlike any other. Um, you know, unless you've done it, you may not understand it. And um, the seniors, these kids have been working the tails off to the last, and they're gonna, they're not gonna get their Thanksgiving game. I remember, you know, playing the games four years in a row and then going back to a meal with my family. And uh, that's tough. And you know, for most of these kids, this is the last time they would have ever put a helmet and shoulder pads on. So, you know, I know, I know Mr. Mitchell played, and you know, he and I were both fortunate enough to play after high school. And uh, most kids don't get that opportunity, and uh, you never forget it. So it stinks, but, you know, we recognize you.
Right, thank you. Mrs. Friedman?
And I would just add also the marching band and the cheerleaders. I didn't play football, but I was in the marching band, so I was.
Of course, yeah, of course, sorry.
The game, yeah, but all of it. And we, you know, we all have really great memories of that, and it's, you know, another tough thing to swallow.
Right. I just got uh, two comments today. I echo with you, Mr. Collins, in regards to the football team and obviously the music program at the high school as well. Um, I graduated in class this past year. I think they were hoping to come back to something for them here, and COVID has kind of put a crunch to that. And I just want to recognize them again. They're coming back to see all their friends and so forth, but you know, it's a bitter pill to swallow as well in regards to uh, not being able to have that graduation. But I want to talk about the um, fill the truck turkey drive. We're still going on. Tomorrow, they're still collecting at the uh, staff parking lot from six-thirty to seven-fifteen AM and two o'clock to three-thirty PM. And then we have fill the truck turkey drives on Saturday, November twenty-first. They're gonna go to the Sea Harbor from ten to ten AM to twelve PM. And then they'll go up to Dave's Marketplace from twelve PM to two-thirty PM. They're still looking for many, many, many items, and um, you know, for those that are less fortunate right now and being out of work, I'm sure, you know, any donation could help, including gift cards or cash as well. So if you're listening to the pub, in the public tonight, you know, if you can help out, please help out. And finally, you know, to the boy soccer team. Um, I just say, want to say you got screwed this, you know, this week. Rhode Island Interscholastic League worked for the school districts in the state. They don't, without us, there is no Interscholastic League. And they could have waited a couple of days for these kids to be in the playoffs. And maybe Mr. Blanchard, if he gets tipped off come spring, that's something happens, and we have a team been suspended, you know, been out because of COVID, and they're coming back in a day or two. If we get more notice, I hope the next school committee has Mr. um, Adams, the school department attorney, go to court and ask for a restraining order, because every school district in this state has been dealing with this COVID issue, and many teams throughout the state have uh, had their weekend games canceled or they've been in quarantine. And, you know, Rhode Island Interscholastic League needs to do better to accommodate everybody in these times. And, you know, like I say, you know, they got screwed, and um, it ain't gonna happen again if uh, it happens to Cumberland, that we, you know, can run the court and you know, put a stop to their nonsense and uh, move on. So those are the night comments I have tonight. I want everyone to have a nice Thanksgiving. As the governor says, only in your household, only is your social group. And uh, you know, if you can donate, please donate to the uh, Happy Basket Program. You know, there's certainly a lot of people that could uh, get help from us, you know, in this time. So if there's no other comments from the public, I'd need to ask Mr. Mitchell, do we have executive session, any additional items for tonight?
No, we're all set. Thank you.
We do not. And I would just say, Mrs. Waters and Mrs. Bernado, I hope this is your last meeting, but thank you for participating. And actually, Mrs. Bernado, we'll see you, no, not tomorrow. So thank you very much once again, and uh, good luck with your endeavors. Any motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mrs. Waters to adjourn?
Second.
Second by uh, Mr. Collins? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it six to zero. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Good night.
Happy Thanksgiving.